How many years ago was that?
Hi, man.
Hey, how are you guys?
Do I have to answer now?
You can answer after the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. How's it going for you?
I know, good. A lot for you guys.
I don't know, we're getting it lined up.
You're gonna find out today, huh?
Yeah.
Well, my guess is that we have the same discussion that we have every year, and then they approve it.
Well, we all, yeah, we all saw.
Because it doesn't seem like they say the same things every year about about it, and then they approve it anyway.
Well, there are some other comments. That's kind of got us concerned, so we'll see. Is there only two of them?
I haven't seen Brad today.
Maybe only two.
Okay, thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, so they said that July, I guess they're gonna sign it to.
All right, welcome. It's the. Welcome, it's twenty, or the ninth day of April two thousand twenty-four. This will be the meeting of the Uentha County Commission at three o'clock. It's actually three oh one. And it is being held in the boardroom of the Uentha County Commission. Our first will be the prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Deanna Nyberg will be as, give us the prayer, and Barbara Simper will give us the pledge.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are so grateful to be meeting today as residents and as public servants of Uentha County. And we ask thee to bless us as we conduct this meeting, that we will conduct ourselves in a manner that's pleasing unto thee. And we're grateful for the area that we live in, and we ask thee to continue to bless this community with prosperity. And we ask thee in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Will, oh, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes from the March twenty-fifth, twenty-four work session and March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Okay, I would, I have reviewed those, and I would make a motion that we approve the minutes as stated.
I'll second and call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Mr. Wilkins?
Commissioners warrants from two weeks. We got March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of three hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. That check run did have an annual payment that we make to Northeast Counseling for one hundred eighty-four thousand, five forty-nine. Also, the next check run, April third of two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Only one on that was actually out of ordinary, as there is the annual fee paid to Bamboo for one-year subscription for the HR program, thirty-nine thousand, five eighty-three. Everything else is pretty much just normal bills.
Okay, thank you. Review counter signature of certified.
No claims this week. We'll have next week. The other one you're thinking of, I'm sure.
Oh, I thought.
It's in this week's check run.
Oh, okay, I thought they were done, okay. All righty, tax matters.
I do have one tax matter, Commissioners, serial number seventeen oh five two zero 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 two. This was a state appeal on a green belt rollback tax for two thousand twenty-two and then two thousand twenty-three. The state, he, he went all the way to a formal appeal, and he won at the formal appeal, so we need to refund back for two thousand twenty-two, three thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety cents, and two thousand twenty-three, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-seven cents, for a total of four thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve that tax as re, rollback rebate as stated.
Refund, it's a refund.
Refund.
Thank you, that refund as stated by Mike Wilkins.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. All right, Ms. Simper.
Hello. I have two items this morning, or this afternoon. The first one is an abatement of taxes in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and eight cents on tax year two thousand twenty-four for a business personal property account, five two five seven, in tax district number twenty-four. And these are on the eight motor graders that Uentha County leases, and so they are exempt.
Okay. Do you have a motion on that?
I would make a motion that we approve. What did you call that?
Abatement.
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 The abatement as stated by Barbara Simper.
I'll second. Vote.
Aye.
Aye, approved. Next.
The other item I have is to add escape property taxes for two thousand twenty-two, one hundred and twelve dollars and forty-six cents, and for two thousand twenty-three, seven hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-two cents on serial number zero six zero two eight zero zero nine zero. And the reason for the escape property taxes, this purch, this property was purchased from Sitla, and we failed to have notification, and so we made the parcel, and so it's a few days in the twenty-two tax year, and then all up twenty-three.
Okay, call for a vote.
I would make a motion that we approve that.
Escaped.
Escaped.
Escape property taxes.
I've got to get my verbiage right here, okay. I would make a motion that we approve that escape tax as presented by Barbara Simper.
Yeah, I'll second that. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Thank you. Okay. Do you have a proclamation for me? Okay. Our attorney's not here yet, so we can't.
No, we were supposed to call him.
Oh, we're calling him?
Yes. Oh, I don't have my phone with me, though. Do you have Eric's number, Eric Johnson's? Sorry.
Here, I put him.
Commissioners, do you want to do all the process?
Recessing?
Okay.
And I think I can probably answer a lot of the questions, but you're welcome to call him, I don't want to stop that part.
Yeah, he just said he would be available and could answer any questions during this.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we reset, recess for the municipal building authority.
And I'll second that, and that'll take the chair out of mine if you vote to approve it. Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It's all yours, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. I'm the chairman of the Municipal Building Authority, so we're now in the Municipal Building Authority. And we are going to open it, this, as a public hearing, approving the adoption by the Municipal Building Authority of Uentha County, Utah, of a perimeter's resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than six hundred and twenty thousand dollars taxable lease revenue bonds, series two thousand twenty-four B, for a compactor and related matters. If anyone would like to speak to that, did you want to go first?
I can give a little more explanation if you want, and then Eric can chime in.
I think we just had the public hearing.
So, just a public hearing, what this is for the public, and then if they have questions, that's fine. We'll try to do our best to answer them. We went before the CIB Board to receive six hundred and twenty thousand, up to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's a fifty-fifty match on a landfill compactor to replace the compactor that out there, that is currently there. This is a zero percent interest loan for, I believe it was ten years. Eric, is it ten years?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. So it's a ten-year, zero percent interest loan. Uh, the landfill will be making the payments for this, uh, annual payment to the MBA, and then the MBA will make the payment to the CIB Board out of the landfill revenues. So with that now.
Do you mind telling, do you know how old the grader was?
The compactor that's there now?
Yes.
It's twenty-plus years. I remember when it came, many, many years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's well over twenty years old.
Okay, thank you. But this is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to make any comments, please come to the podium and state your name for the record and your comments. Okay. Hearing, no comments. Then we will close the public hearing. And we will move to item number seven, which is the resolution, number zero four dash zero nine dash two thousand twenty-four, MBA one. This is a resolution that will approve the execution by said authority of an annually renewable lease agreement with Uentha County, Utah, for a compactor, authorizing the issuance and sale by said authority of its taxable lease revenue bonds, series two thousand twenty-four B, in the amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, authorizing the execution by the authority of a master resolution and the security documents and other and related matters.
Chair, I'd make a motion to accept that resolution.
Okay, and I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous, so thank you, that resolution passes.
Thank you, Eric.
I would accept your motion.
I would make a, uh, motion to adjourn MBA and reconvene the regular commission meeting.
I will second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, that was unanimous.
All right, number nine will be resolution zero four zero nine two oh two four R one, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Uentha County, Utah, authorizing the Municipal Building Authority of Uentha County, Utah, to issue and sell five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars taxable lease revenue bonds, series two zero two four B, for a compactor and authorizing an annual renewable lease, and the execution of all related documents and related matters.
I would so move.
All right, I'll second, call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next will be a resolution for, I'm sorry, zero four zero nine two zero two four R two, encouraging Uentha County residents to remove junk debris and solid waste from yards and establishing a spring cleanup week for two thousand twenty-four, April twentieth through the twenty-seventh.
Mr. Sturmer, do you have that resolution? Yes, Mr. Chair, I can take that. Greg was here last commission meeting and presented on this, so, um, I don't think we really need to have any discussion, additional discussion, because it's pretty straightforward, something we do every year. Uh, but we do have the draft resolution, it has been emailed to Greg, Greg reviewed it, emailed Harley back and said he's, he's good with it. Um, it just sets forth the, the dates of April twentieth to April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and the waiver of the fees for small pickup and trailer loads, the pickup and trailer loads, and, um, dump trucks to incentivize and encourage county residents to clean up residential areas and public lands. But the, the commercial trash and everything like that, it's, it's not waived. This is for residential cleanup purposes. So, it's here for your.
Okay, and again, it's April twentieth through the twenty-seventh.
Yes, and if you don't mind, Chair, um, there's a couple other points to this. And it will be advertised in the paper, so hopefully you'll see that, and it gives a little bit more information. But they, there will still be a twenty-dollar charge if you bring refrigerators or anything with Freon in it, because there is a cost for us to take those items and deal with the Freon. So that will not be waived, or, and also, they're only going to allow four tires per load.
There's a fee for that.
Well, he said there's not a fee for that, but it's, there's four, only four tires allowed per load. But that will be in the, the ad, advertising, and that about this. But other than that, clean up your yards and get all your stuff hauled to the dump.
It's Greg's favorite week, so.
It is.
Have that be in the ad as well.
Okay.
Might be the final hurrah for that camp, compactor, too.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yes, so I would make a mo, motion to approve resolution zero four zero nine, two thousand twenty-four, R two.
And I would second that and call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next one is National Telecommunications Week Proclamation for April fourteenth through the twentieth. This is a matter that's very dear to my heart, because when you dial nine one one, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that person that picks up the phone is the telecommunicator. One of the things that most people don't realize is the dispatch center handles for three counties and all the federal agencies after hours. So they have a total of about forty-eight telephone lines to handle and even more radio channels. So when you call them up and you might think they're being short with you, they might have an emergency going on in another county that we don't know anything about. So I very strongly support this, and I would think that, uh, it would be really nice if anybody would like to send something to them, a bunch of flowers or something, send them by way of the Highway Patrol Office over in the Public Safety Building. And Mr. Sturmer, I believe you have the, probably the information on that?
I do, it's, it's, it's pretty short, um, and not one that we have done regularly, so I'll just, I'll just read it, just so people know it's in the proclamation.
Is your thing on, your microphone?
Yep, but I'll do that.
That's.
And I'll do this.
Thank you.
And now I'm on the radio. Okay, so it says proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, whereas emergencies that require law enforcement officers, fire, or emergency medical services can occur at any time. And whereas when the, when an emergency occurs, the prompt responsible enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Uentha Basin Consolidated Dispatch Center. And whereas public safety communicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with the emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Uentha Basin Consolidated Dispatch Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Uentha County Commission declare the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Uentha County in honor of the women and men whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. And then today's date and commission signature.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next is requesting a fee waiver at the Conference Center for the Gun and Knife Show bill.
It didn't get adopted.
Oh.
So we need a motion just to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to adopt the proclamation.
Okay.
I would make that motion.
You're next. And I'd second that, call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
Yeah.
Did I miss one?
Yeah, the rodeo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to switch?
Bill, go ahead. Got you up here, going to keep you.
Okay, my name is Bill Lewis. I, along with two other individuals, constitute the Friends of Buckskin Hills. Our reason for existence is to raise funds for our local, uh, shooting area, the Buckskin Hill Shooting Range. The idea is to make it a safer and a more impressive, as well as a more utilitarian facility, uh, owned by the county. We would come before you at this, at this time to ask that the fee for the convention center be waived based upon the idea that, and the basis, that all the profits raised, other than expenses, of course, what we end up spending, are donated to Buckskin Hills for those functions that we talked about. Do you have questions that I can answer? Before I go into that, Carney was supposed to be here to present this, and he had all a bunch of information, and his wife locked herself out of the house with frozen goods, and so Carney's not here, instead, I am here. And I have very little information beyond what I've given you, but I'll do my best.
I think, I think one of the things that you need to, uh, enlighten us is how much, uh, I shouldn't say how much, how many people on an average do we have come from out of the area just to utilize our range?
Rough estimate is about, uh, sixty percent of, uh, the people that are dealers come from outside the area. So they bring in funds for rooms and board and food and beverages and that type of stuff. Uh, the other forty percent are, are local individuals, some of whom are our sponsors also.
Okay. And I'm going to scare you because I, I'm going by memory. I believe that the rent is about thirteen hundred dollars.
For the conference center?
If they rented it for the conference center, we'd be waiving about that much.
Yes.
I thought it was eighteen fifty.
It could be. Somewhere between eighteen and.
Okay.
Thirteen, I can't remember, that's why I say I was counting on my memory.
I did have a question, did you?
No, go ahead.
Did, did you get a chance to talk with Leisha with Travel and Tourism about their formula or anything?
I thought that that was going to be carried out by someone else, which is why I'm here unprepared today.
Oh, okay.
So, being on the agenda, we thought we'd better take advantage of it.
Okay, because I just, I thought you were going to visit with her before, hopefully before this happened, before it came on our agenda to see, um, Leisha and Travel and Tourism, just for everyone else in. When we have, um, these good things that come to our community and want to do good things in our community, ask us to donate or to waive, uh, sponsor, I guess, and wa, or waive fees. Um, Leisha's office with Travel and Tourism has a formula that they use to calculate how much the county can donate to that, I don't know what you call it, sponsor, I should say sponsor, to that cause. And, uh, there are so many in this community that do that and do so many good things for this community. That was what they came up with before, I believe, I was in office, John and I were put in office. So it is something that was, they thought was fair to everyone that would come before the commission and ask for these things, just to explain. And, um, that's our way of trying to help. We have a fund that, I believe it has sixty thousand dollars in it for each year in our budget to use for those things, for those different causes and people that, um, would like us to participate. So, I'm sorry, that's what I was referring to, though, and I didn't know if you'd had a chance to do that.
Would you mind if we tabled this and come and visit?
Commissioners, can I jump in real quick? So this one, in, in my opinion, is, is different than the ones that we're talking about under that scenario. Under that scenario, we're dealing with outside groups who are doing benefits in the out, outside in our community and asking the county if they would like to contribute to their private event, their private cause or whatever. This is a group who is coming and using our facility to then raise money to be used in our facility, which is different than other charitable organizations that are taking that money to then use it for their charitable organization. So we've, we've drawn that, that distinction because here, all the funds, except like, like was mentioned, when there's those actual costs, when, if you're, you know, paying for banners or something like that to promote the event. But all the other funds are going directly back into the Buckskin Hill Shooting Complex. So we, we have distinguished this request from other requests, because they're not asking for a, a cash sponsor. They're asking, because the funds are being raised to the benefit of a Uentha County facility, can we just waive that fee?
That's what.
If the county wants to change that direction, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to draw that distinction between what this request has historically been and what the other requests, like the one we just had a couple weeks ago, which was very good organization, but they're trying to raise money for their own kind of like private charitable organization and asking the county to be a, a.
A sponsor.
A sponsor or to donate to it.
Okay, Mr. Lewis had asked that, and he had stated that to me when we talked, and I just, I'm glad you gave us that clarification.
Great, yeah, great, great question, but that's, that's how I see the, these requests being.
Okay.
Being different. Um, I don't know if our auditor has any, any independent question on it, but that, that's where I see it, because the funds are coming directly into the Uentha County facility. But.
Okay. Okay. Well, then.
Based on that information?
Yeah, based on that, I guess I would say I would make a motion to approve the fee waiver for the Gun and Knife Show.
For two thousand twenty-four?
Two thousand twenty-four? Now, we, I was gonna say, we just had it.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So two thousand twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that. And call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. There you go, sir. That simple.
But I hope that they are getting with you to start working on a plan for the gun range.
I will have a plan, uh, prepared that I would like to present to the commission. And it will be near future, I will arrange to.
Well, yeah, I think.
Visit with them and, and go through them before it comes to us, everybody get on the same page.
Right, and I believe we were wanting to involve the user groups, how better?
Yes.
Yes, to come up with a couple optional comprehensive plans for the gun range.
Thank you.
Advise Carney to be here next week. We'll question him then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I apologize, but Vernal Roundup Rodeo. Certainly.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Carson Young. I currently serve as Vice President for Vernal's Dinosaur Roundup Rodeo. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to present to you today, um, and thank you, uh, and your employees, um, at Western Park, the Conference Center, um, the law enforcement, and all others that help with our event. Uh, this year's event will be held June thirteenth through the fifteenth on Father's Day weekend. Um, and I'll explain a little bit more, um, the reasoning behind that change shortly. I did want to point out a few highlights, um, and also just to back up a little bit, this is a request for sponsorship. Mike and I were confirming the amounts, um, last year we requested twenty-five thousand dollars. So in two thousand twenty-three, we had six hundred and sixty-nine professional contestants. So in twenty twenty-three, we had six hundred and sixty-nine professional contestants enter our rodeo. We had spectators attend from thirty-six different states that we have record of, and that's actual ticket purchases. This does not account for, for example, my friend, his parents live here in Vernal, he's a resident of Montana, but his mom bought the tickets and they came. So we have record of at least thirty-six different states from the spectators. We were five hundred seats away from selling out Thursday night, which was a record, to my knowledge, and Friday and Saturday night, we sold out. Friday for the second consecutive year and Saturday for the fourth time in five years, the one anomaly being twenty twenty.
Carson?
Yes.
Quick question. Do you know how many seats you sell?
So it, Western Park has a capacity of four thousand seven hundred and fifty. We chose not to do standing room only to make sure the event was a better experience for our spectators, security, law enforcement. So that was a choice we made last year.
Thank you.
Here's a quick map of everywhere that we sold. We have record of selling tickets from, so we're getting, you know, as far away as Hawaii and Connecticut of people attending our rodeo. With, you know, because of our, our success and some of the grant monies we've received, we've been able to give back to the community, U N A County Search and Rescue, Basin Junior Rodeo, and Vernal Community Holiday, Holidays. This also does not include, our fiscal year ends September thirtieth. We were able to help with the county through some private donors that we had to secure additional panels and livestock equipment to support the Junior Livestock Show and our event that will remain property of the county. And that was just over thirty thousand dollars. That'll be on next year's report. A few highlights for two thousand twenty-four. We'll have nine-time N F R Barrelman and Comedy Act of the Year, John Harrison, again. Our Bullfighters will be Dusty Tuckness and Nathan Harp, who between them have seventeen NF R qualifications, and Dusty's been the Bullfighter of the Year ten times. And then Friday and Saturday night, we'll have Charlie Jenkins in concert. So we have the best of the best in rodeo entertainment coming. Because of that, we'll be broadcast live on the Cowboy Channel and the Cowboy Channel Plus app. We will once again be a part of the P R C A Playoff Series, which is the top sixty rodeos in the country. So with that, this kind of plays a little bit into the date change up. Here I have a table that lists every single Playoff Series rodeo this year and showing the amount of payout to the contestants. And so the payout is combined between the added money that the committee puts in and the contestant entry fees. And so kind of the minimum threshold now for twenty twenty-four that they've stated is the rodeo has to pay out two hundred thousand dollars. And so pretty much all of these rodeos that were less than two hundred thousand last year, they're upping their purse money to make sure they stay as a Playoff Series event. And to kind of go back to the date change, all of these rodeos in blue in the center would be rodeos we would be competing with this year in July. So we always compete against Calgary, which is the second largest rodeo during the regular season. Colorado Springs is an invitational Playoff Series event that pays out over six hundred thousand. We also conflict with Casper and Sheridan, Wyoming. And there is becoming a shortage of rodeo athletes. And so this is kind of what's contributing to more and more cities and communities upping their prize money. And, you know, in the short run, we did not feel we could keep up with Colorado Springs, Sheridan, and Casper. And so for the past three to five years, we've been evaluating a date change. And so this is why we have moved to June, and it will be Father's Day weekend this year and going forward. On this graph, the yellow rodeos are the Utah rodeos, which every year it seems like they're adding more and more purse money. And then down here in green are rodeos that would be our same weekend, but they're smaller, they're not Playoff Series events, which would also pull contestants from our rodeo. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll open the floor to any questions from the public or the Commissioners.
Do you mind going back to that previous slide?
Yes.
Okay, so the ones by Vernal are the ones that we compete with in June?
Yes. But they are not the same weekend as us. So Sisters Oregon is two weeks before us, Woodward, Oklahoma's one week before us, Reno is the week after us, Starts the week after us, Prineville, Oregon's the week after us, and then Greeley and Pecos, Texas are kind of that last week of June that bleeds into July. So we will be the only Playoff Series event in June on our weekend.
Wow, okay.
I've heard rumor, and of course rumor's not any more than what it's worth, that this was the last year we could get the announcer and the rodeo stock to sign a contract pending the change of date.
That, that's not correct. So we have the same rodeo announcer. He's under contract with us for two more years, and then we'll, we'll see where that goes. So the announcer we've had, we've had him for, this will be his nineteenth year here, Roger Mooney, and he's announced the N F R seven times. Our stock contractor, Powder River Rodeo, we are under contract with them for two more years, and neither of us have intent to change. And so, you know, if, if there does warrant a change, we will explore it at that point, but at this time, we're, we're not intend on changing.
So everybody who's hearing that rodeo just heard it from the horse's mouth, it's not changing for at least two more years for sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
And it doesn't, they don't, haven't expressed a concern with change in date?
No, with our, our stock contractor, they did have some concerns because they do like a, an invitational-only bareback and saddle bronca event in Fallon, Nevada, but we'll work with them to secure subcontractors so that we still have the same quality stock at our event. We did lose one contract personnel. Her name was Jill Franzinload, and she was our sound director. She had a prior commitment and that she wasn't willing to break, so we've hired a new sound director, but we're, we're excited about where we're going from here.
And hopefully we have new sound over there.
Yes, we have hired a separate sound contractor to bring in speakers. We'll have backup power available, and we have a new music director who also has his own set of speakers in the event something happens. But we have, we confidently feel we've addressed that issue.
Well, I meant with the improvements and updates-
Oh, yes, with the improvements.
-we've done over at Western Park, sorry. I was just meaning that we have been updating and running fiber and running more conduit-
Yeah.
-to the arena to help facilitate upgrades and updates to those, those things, so, great.
Okay.
I do not have any other questions.
I don't.
Okay.
And, and so generally, we've, as part of this presentation, we request the commission's approval for our sponsorship funds. Last year was twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Now we call on our man. Did we budget that this year? Let him out.
We budget that every year. Thanks. I would make a motion, we approve the twenty-five thousand dollar sponsorship of the Vernal Dinosaur, Vernal's Dinosaur Roundup Rodeo for twenty twenty-four.
Then I'll second that and call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Carson. See if I can get this right this time.
I'll just get up here before you-
If you would get up there, Travis, that'll help me a lot. Twenty twenty-four Rise and Thrive Business Speed Pitch Competition Report.
Okay, so I made a presentation before I looked at the agenda, so I'm going to shorten a lot of my presentation to save some time.
Like to go out at five.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Travis Campbell with U N A County Economic Development, and I am here to report on the twenty twenty-four Rise and Thrive Pitch Competition, which was our fourth annual event. This, this event, it provides new business concepts and businesses whose doors have been open for less than one year to compete for funding in a prize package of various resources. The intent here is to assist these entrepreneurs and new small businesses to really get their feet under them and to, to have the tools to be successful as they, they start their new business. Understanding that the, that a healthy, small business environment is crucial for, for overall economic health and economic growth, this event is put together to assist these businesses with various advisory sessions, meetings with experts, different tools, support from local sponsors, and of course, the, the prize money that we offer to, to our winners. But again, I'm going to skip through a lot of this. I was going to give you some, some of the history, but all of this funding, I will note, all of this funding comes through the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunities Annual Rural County Grant that U N A County applies for. This, this year, we had eight different programs that were, were recommended by our community Advisory Board and then approved and subsequent, approved by the commission and then subsequently approved by the, the Governor's Office. So that's how this event is funded each year. Lots of, lots of organization and a lot of planning goes into this, so I'll give Sidney Millet with the Innovation Hub, the manager of the, the hub, a lot of thanks for the, the help putting this, this year's event together. It does take quite a lot, not only in organizing, but in preparation from our competitors too. So I'll skip through most of this, again, just to save a little bit of time, and get to our winners. So we, we do a top three in the final round, and then a People's Choice winner, the People's Choice is sponsored by the, the Chamber of Commerce, so that prize package includes a one-year membership, some cash, and various other items from local businesses that are donated. And the People's Choice winner is, is chosen during the final round of the competition by the public that's there. This year, we had about a hundred and sixty, probably a hundred and seventy individuals who attended, so if you haven't attended, I recommend coming next year. It's a great event, lots of fun, lots of excitement, and it's cool to see these new business ideas and, and hear from them. So this year's People's Choice winner was Amberne and Britton Jackson with their company, Squeaky Soap. And even though these two are kids, they did an amazing job during their pitch, probably just as good of a pitch as anybody else did, and were able to answer all the judges' questions flawlessly. They make their fun and unique soaps themselves. This is their business, not their parents', and they target this to a kids' market, so they've got a variety of colors and shapes and designs and some soaps that even have toys inside of them. So the People's Choice Award, again, it's voted by the public who's there that night, and these two were a shoo-in to win that. So they were our People's Choice winner. Our third place winner was Amanda Jenkins with her new business, Vernal Vineyard. And I was really excited about this one. I think this is a great idea, and I think there's a, a lot of opportunity for growth with this kind of business, something we don't really have here in, in U N A County. And what a successful vineyard could mean, not only for the residents here, but for those visiting the county, I think the, the sky's the limit here. So Amanda started nursing the, the vineyard she and her husband had purchased a couple of years back, nursing that back to health, and last fall was able to harvest her first batch of, of fresh local grapes and produce some, some organic grape juice. So a little less than three hundred bottles she made last year, all of those sold out fairly quickly, and as she grows, she'll be able to produce more and more of her product and do so more efficiently. So she's going to use her prize package to acquire a destemmer, a couple, new juicers, a grape shoot, and like three dozen new plants to really not only produce more product, but really grow her overall operations and sell her items through local retail stores and online. And her target markets, those individuals looking for locally-produced goods, so again, that's residents and, you know, that, that tourism arm of our economy, looking for those local goods, those organizing events, and anybody looking for like unique gift ideas. So again, really excited about her business. Second place went to Nellie Gomez and her new full-service laundry business. So Dino Clean will provide pickup, cleaning, and delivery to local restaurants, commercial businesses, and even certain parts of the energy industry that have regular laundry needs. So you kind of picture a restaurant that has aprons, washcloths, mops, things like that that need regular commercial use. And these kinds of services exist and are successful in the Wasatch Front, but with that pickup and delivery option that she's going to offer, Dino Clean will provide something new to U N A County, which is, which is exciting. And Ms. Gomez will use her prize money just to purchase the equipment that she needs to, to serve these local businesses. And then for first place, our winner was Shay Densley. Her and her husband are venturing in a new business called Hope's Haven, which is equine assisted therapy. So again, this is a service that is not currently offered in the Vernal area with its closest service being out in Utah County. And the Densleys have, they do have experience working with and training horses here in U N A County. Shay in particular has worked at these other facilities in other parts of the state, offering individuals with mental health needs, different treatments, and relief using courses in the process. So kind of a, a unique niche market, but something that is out there and there's a demand for. She's earned her degree in kind of an equine-focused agricultural science and has certifications to facilitate these equine therapy sessions. So with their funding, they will use the, the money to further her certification in therapeutic writing, as well as make improvements to their property to really be able to offer these services at their existing facilities. So like our other winners, this is just another example of someone who noticed a need in the community and is taking the steps to really fill that need and provide that service. So just quick recap, because I skipped through so much of that. First place winners received twelve thousand dollars, second place, seven thousand, and third place, four thousand, in addition to the, the donations from the other sponsors and local businesses. Both Evans Family Media and V Six Media have donated those top three winners with advertising credits through their online platforms, through the theater, the movie theaters, and like V Six through, like Strata TV. So they'll have those, those advertising credits to, to help further the, you know, their reach, make sure they're advertising to the public. U B Tech is offering all three winners a full ride scholarship to any one of their programs, which is a great resource, and all three are planning on taking advantage of that. Again, the, the Chamber of Commerce sponsored our, our People's Choice Award, and Strata Networks is offering internet service to each of our winners for up to a year. So with that, I believe we had another great pitch competition. I think our, our winners showcase a variety of different services and goods, and I think they're, they're going to do good not only for residents, but really that tourism side of our economy as well. So we'll stay in touch with our winners, we'll make sure they're staying on top of what their, their pitch, what they've designated that, that funding for in their pitch, make sure they're, they're growing and they're, they've got the tools they need. So with that, we'll, if you have any questions for me, if not, we'll just start getting ready for next year. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, very nice.
Yeah, the only thing I thought would be good would be, we just talked about this a little bit, explaining to the audience a little bit more-
Oh, yeah. Do you want me to, I've got a slide, you want me to pull it up?
Not this, not this audience, I mean, when you do the Rise and Thrive and kind of explaining to the public how you judge and, and what criteria and what you look at, I think that would help them a lot.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Heidi? Twenty twenty-four H M E P Grant Award Acceptance. Heidi, I'm about manage, emergency management.
Heidi Lundberg, Emergency Management. This is a, the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant through the Utah State Fire Marshal's Office. That is for the U N A County L E P C, our Local Emergency Planning Committee, in the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars, and then we will have an eight hundred dollar match, which is budgeted in my budget already.
Okay.
And what do we use that for? So we will, it, there's, we will be using it for, it's called a software Aristatech, peak software. It does plume modeling for all of the tier-two companies in our area. We have one of the highest counties, we have, our county is one of the highest for tier-two submissions, which is hazardous materials on site. And so this will help us get all of that data, compile it into that software, and then we can use that for preparedness and planning for if a bad day happen type of thing.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the grant?
I would make a motion that we accept, I can't remember what it stands for, so I'll just say HMEP Grant Award in the amount of $3,200.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Zeke.
Commissioners, Zeke Atwood, purchasing and grants office. I've been working with Jess, our Facilities Matter, on this one. We had a, he came to me with the need to do a crack seal and seal coat of parking lots for UNA County. We listed six different areas that we'd be doing, so we have the county building here, the library, the public safety complex, the Children's Justice Center, the Tri-County Health and Maintenance Shop area, and the Conference Center. We put out a request for proposal. We had two respondents on that, which was Bonneville Asphalt and Repair and Asphalt Preservation. We did reach out to local vendors and did not receive any bids locally. So those are the two we got. We had an evaluation committee look at those bids and compare them according to the structure that was set forth in the RFP. Bonneville Asphalt did win the technical portion of the points system, and then Asphalt Preservation came in with a low bid. Asphalt Preservation of the low bid was $123,402.41, and then Bonneville Asphalt and Repair came in at $139,098.43. So Asphalt Preservation won the cost point section. However, the technical points was weighted higher than the cost, and Bonneville Asphalt was the winning bid with 656.77 points. And then Asphalt Preservation came in second with 647.62 points. So it was fairly close, but the evaluation committee recommends that we award this RFP to Bonneville Asphalt and Repair.
Do you know if we've had experience with both of these companies?
I don't know. Jess, do you know? Have you worked with them before?
You have to come up, Jess.
Asphalt Preservation, he said we have.
But not with Bonneville? Okay. I'm just, I'm not questioning the committee. Don't, don't take it that way. I was just, these are very close. And where the price was lower with Asphalt Preservation, that's why I was just asking.
Okay. Call for a motion.
I will make a motion that we award the crack seal and seal coat of the parking lots bid to Bonneville Asphalt and Repair at a price of $139,098.43.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right, sir. Thank you. All right, next one's number 17, a backhoe loader rental agreement with Wheeler. We have a backhoe that we pay $14,000 a year for to rent it. It's kept, I believe it's utilized out at Buckskin Hills or Roads Department. I don't remember which one this one is. I think this is the smaller one. But it's a agreement that we've had, rental agreement, and at the end of a couple more years, we'll possibly be able to buy it. So we'd come before to approve it. Does it have a motion?
Yeah, we already have the agreement, and John, your office has been able to review that? Probably no changes. It's just extending it. Okay. Then I would make a motion to approve the backhoe loader rental agreement for $14,000 annually. Till when?
Just year by year.
No, but I mean, it has an expiration date.
Under the term of us being able to purchase, and I don't, Scott wasn't able to be here today, so I don't remember when that is, but each rental, each rental agreement is just annual.
Oh, because this is rental, not lease.
Correct.
So we're just.
We're just renting.
Okay. Thank you.
But each one's just year by year.
Yeah, this is a true rental agreement. We can turn it back whenever we want. It's not a lease purchase at all.
Right. That's what I was thinking. So thank you for that clarification. Did I already make a motion?
So I'll second that motion. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next one, a streetlight agreement. Mr. Kreuzer.
Okay, Matt Kazir with Community Development. I was asked to be here by Scott since he wasn't able to make it, and I've been involved somewhat with this process. This is for the installation of a streetlight. So this is for lighting the area, not a traffic light. So it's in agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for them to install a streetlight at 3500 South and Highway 40. It's been in the works for quite a while. I saw some old minutes, but I didn't see a date on those minutes. I don't remember if Ty remembers the date on those or not, but it was several years ago because it was back when Brian Meyer was at the Road Department. The commission did approve it, and then I guess it got lost in the shuffle of things at the Road Department. But anyway, last year, I was asked by Scott and Commissioner Horrocks to get that revived and get that started moving again so that that light could get installed. And so we did that middle of last year, and Rocky Mountain Power finally got us the agreement back, back in December. And the agreement was signed by myself, by me. That was December 7th of 2023. The amount for the streetlight is $4,791. And then this, I don't know, it kind of got lost over Rocky Mountain Power after that as well. So they reached back out, well, I've been reaching out to them because Scott's been asking, hey, have you heard anything on this? And what's been going on? And I guess they've had some employee shuffling as well. And so the new person that's in charge of this area got ahold of me again. And so we're starting to, trying to get this started again, and so we can finish it out. So the request today is, the agreement is $4,791. And then the ongoing obligation would be the standard streetlight agreement that we have already with Rocky Mountain Power. So I think it was 14, says it was 1489 a month. And then Rocky Mountain Power owns it, and we just pay that amount. If something happens to it or the bulb needs to be replaced, it's all Rocky Mountain Power that does all of that.
If someone wrecks into it, knocks it down, do they pay?
They replace it. Yep.
Okay.
And this will just be added to our, I mean, I'm sure Mike knows. I mean, we pay every month for the streetlights, and so this will be added to that bill. I guess, I don't know exactly where the $4,791 is coming from. I'm guessing maybe the Road Department, but it wasn't budgeted in my budget to do that.
Is this the same price of four years ago when they lost the paperwork?
Um, no, it's actually a little less.
Good. We'll take it.
It was $5,549 back then that they were looking at, and so it's went down a little bit.
Commissioners, all the streetlights come out of municipal service fund because it's outside of the county, and we have a separate department just for that. So that's where the funds will come from to pay for it.
And we have enough in the budget for this.
Should have.
Okay. Thank you. I do remember this. I think I might have contacted Scott about it. I do, I do know I talked to Rocky Mountain Power about this because I had, I remember an individual from the community that had requested this at that, I guess, intersection because it is very difficult to see when you're driving on the highway, and it also curves as you turn off the highway. So it would be nice to be able to see the road.
Yeah.
I don't know if we've had any accidents there.
It's been needed there for a while, so.
Quite a while, yes.
Great. That's good to know that we're finally getting it installed. Thank you.
So I guess today, and maybe John can help if I get this wrong, but I guess today we're looking for approval of that $4,791. And then I guess since I signed it, maybe it's just recognizing that it's been signed, the agreement's been signed by me already as well, or do you want, we can print out a new one and have it re-signed as well, whatever?
I think if the motion just authorizes in that signature that's already been put on there, that will be fine for this because it's all going to fall under the general agreement we have with them anyway. We're adding one more, one more light to it, so. If it was a whole, brand-new agreement, I probably would say yes. Let's get it, let's get the chair to sign. But under these circumstances, let's just go forward.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah. I would make a motion that we approve the streetlight agreement for the light at 3500 South Highway 40 in the amount of $4,791, and then the ongoing $14.88 or $89 cents.
Yep.
Okay. Per month.
I'll second that. I apologize. They've got a request for another one. I was looking for it, and I can't find the email, but there'll be another one coming your way.
I know where it is. It's on Fifth North, about 2400 West. They have, there has been a request. So I don't know if that's you, or do we ask Scott to look into that?
Yeah, either one. I mean, I'm happy to help where I can on it. I just deal with it quite a bit with the subdivisions and things, so I think they came to me to, since I was familiar with the process, so.
Okay, good.
But I think if the motion could also include the signature on the agreement as well.
I would also add allowing or approving Matt Kazir's signature on that.
Then I'll second that also. I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Dean. Public defender contact for District Court.
Lance Dean, managing public defender. We had talked about this in the work session yesterday. Aaron Owens is an attorney from Provo, Utah. He has accepted and signed a contract using the District Court form that we had already approved, that you've already approved as a commission. That's going to begin, be backdated April 1st through December 31st of this year, 2024. It'll be for nine months, and then as is typical in our contracts with the District Court attorneys, there's the option to, if both parties agree, to extend that for two additional one-year terms. And the compensation is $9,166 per month, which is also commensurate with the other three District Court attorneys. So we're asking the commissioners to sign the contract. Stop time.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve this public defender contract in the amount, for District Court, in the amount of $9,166 a month.
I'll second that. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 2024 UEN Wi-Fi for Libraries Project Plan.
Commissioners, Ryan Matson, UNA County IT. This is a project that UEN has basically leftover ARPA funds that they are trying to give out to libraries around the state. So any library was able to apply to it, and I think they had, I think they said somewhere around 29 libraries actually applied to it. So this is UEN 2024 Wi-Fi in Libraries Program. We applied for it and we received what will be a, yeah. They'll reimburse us, there we go, $34,858.15. They wanted it to be pretty, pretty exact on everything else like that. And we talked about this yesterday in work session, so pretty much all we need is approval of signatures on it. It's already been digitally sent to Commissioner Larson, so any questions on it? Anything we didn't cover in yesterday's work session, I think, I think we pretty much covered it, so.
No, I think this will be great to update some of the systems there in the library, so.
Yeah, and like I mentioned yesterday, our hope is that this will keep things nice for about seven years, so.
Great. And then this was found by the library or Jenny and Grants?
So originally Sam Passy kind of passed it on to me, and then UEN, UEN got ahold of Sam Passy, and then Sam Passy said, hey, if you want to, you know, front-run this where I'm leaving, go ahead. And then I just pretty much, Crystal and I filled out the application, sent it in, and they said, okay.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Appreciate your work.
Go for a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the UEN 2024 UEN Wi-Fi for Libraries Project Plan Budget Application and MOU for $34,858.15.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to think about this next one?
I, I don't have this one.
Have anybody from Sheriff's Office? Okay.
Table that one?
We'll table that one till the next meeting. Oh, you have a copy of it, Mike?
No. Oh.
We'll untable this for a minute. If I see the contract, I think I know what it is.
Yeah, I can table it.
I think, okay.
This is an agreement with Utah State University to provide mental health, mind-body training project. This is a grant that the Sheriff's Department received, and this extends it to March 31st of 2025.
And if I understand, this is for all of the people in the sheriff's office to, are able to utilize this?
Sure. You understand that a little more than I do.
Well, I asked that question, and I believe it was to you.
I think it is.
And that's what I was told.
That's why I say if it's all the green, I believe it is, yes.
Commissioners, do you mind if we move to the next item? Can I just take a look at it real quick? Just to see, because I'd.
Does it have an amount?
I'm just wondering. Yeah, I just wanted to check.
They've just extended the time period to use it.
So it wouldn't cost us anymore just extending the time period?
That was my understanding of it.
I believe that's correct. It's my understanding also.
I, I assumed the sheriff would be here to talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're good. Okay.
Or, I mean, I'm good. I don't know if you're good, but I'm good.
I'm great.
Okay.
That's where I seem to sign it. Okay.
Okay. Well, then I will make a motion that we approve the Amendment One to the Cost Reimbursable Services Agreement between USU and the Sheriff's Office for Mental Health Services through March 31st, 2025.
May I authorize Sheriff Labram to sign for it?
And authorize Sheriff Labram to sign.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great. And yeah, just Ty was great. She sent that out last week. I just need to make sure that my mind was thinking. That's what I saw, and that's what we're talking about, so. Yep, all that had been previously sent out.
Mr. Wilkman? Approval of the State Auditor Risk Fraud Assessment.
Commissioners, the State Auditor's Office has what they call the Fraud Risk Assessment we have to do every year. I have completed the check in their boxes. We have a score of 355, which puts us at a very low risk level. The lower number, higher risk level. We have enough internal controls going that that's what we score out on that one. And I have to sign it, and the commissioner chair has to sign it, but it has to be presented in a public meeting now, so. So that's what I'm doing. At this point, I have emailed it out to all of you earlier last week, so it's here for your approval.
And 355 out of what?
355. The most you can get is 395.
And the lower, the better?
No, the higher, the better. The lower, the more risk you are.
Okay. So we were considered low risk?
Very low risk.
Very low risk? Okay.
Sheriff, a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the State Auditor's Risk Fraud Assessment as presented. as presented.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And that's basically what it says, right? They've, they've assessed us and said that our fraud risk is low.
We assessed us and said we were low.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for public comment. Public comment is a time for public comment, not public debate. The county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration. The county will not be responding to comments or answering questions. Comments made might be something the county has the power to act or may not. This is a recorded public meeting. If someone would like to make a comment, they will need to wait until the microphone's available and state their name for the record. Please be respectful, no interrupting. Wait your turn. Total of 15 minutes will be allotted for public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes. Do we have anybody available or that would like to have public comment? I see no one. Okay. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you all.